Thirty seconds. Wayne, will you lead us in the pledge?
I'll do that.
Okay. Ten, nine. Am I ready? Yes.
All right. I will meet council. Good evening and welcome. Tonight, we have with us Chris Jenkins from K E R M, K G O S. And this is being broadcast live, and it will be later put up on YouTube. We also have Ms. Cindy Shealy here from the Torrington Telegram. This is Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the eighteenth council meeting of the year and the second council meeting in September. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Deal to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the mayor's informational items. Through funds received from the Wyoming Community Gas Program, the city of Torrington is able to provide scholarships to E W C students. I want to share a thank you letter from one such recipient, a thank you note written to city clerk treasurer Lynette Stricker. Dear Ms. Stricker, I would like to take this time to thank you for your contribution to my education. I am truly grateful for the opportunities I have earned. College is an exciting time, and I am eager to start the next chapter in my life. When I picture college in my mind, I think of the largest opportunity in my life, the opportunity to achieve a degree and start my life. With your contribution, you have provided me with the opportunity to pursue an education and succeed with my life's work. Very few people have the opportunity to attend college, and it has been a goal of mine for quite some time. I would like to thank you once again from the bottom of my heart, and I appreciate everything you have done for me. I am very excited to embark on this journey and hope you have a wonderful year. Sincerely, Dylan Packard. That's why we were able to do that through funds from the Wyoming Community Gas Program. Summer is winding down. Autumn begins officially on the calendar on September twenty-third. Last Saturday was a big, big event on Main Street. It was a beautiful late summer day. Downtown was the fiftieth anniversary of the Scotts Bluff Valley Street Rods Annual Classic Car Show. Doug Mercer, the... There was also a variety of food trucks, treats for the kids, and a bouncy house. Also downtown on Saturday was the Elks Club State Convention. The last thing on the agenda on Saturday was the last Main Street concert of the year from four P M. to six, seven P M. By all reports, all went very well, and it was reported to be great fun and profitable for the downtown merchants. Ball field use is finally slowing down, so care and maintenance can take place. We are giving the soccer fields at the sports complex a well-deserved rest. The soccer kids are playing this fall on the school district property between the armory and the central administration building. As school is now in session, please continue to take extra care with driving. Please slow down and use extra caution, watching for pedestrian traffic, school buses, bicycles, motorcycles, and the now numerous electric bikes that are out and about. As always, please refrain from using your cell phones while driving. I took a tour of the town yesterday. There are several properties that are not complying with the lawn mowing and weed ordinance. Several yards and driveways are not meeting zoning and ordinance standards regarding unlicensed and decrepit vehicles. Please take care to comply with these zoning regulations and city ordinances to beautify our city and make it an even more pleasant place to live. Please also do this to avoid a visit from our code enforcement officers. If you have concerns, please feel free to contact the police department on the non-emergency phone number, which is five three two seven zero zero one. Annual fall cleanup is afoot. It is from September sixteenth through September twenty-third, which is Saturday. The baler is open Monday through Friday this week from seven to four, and this coming Saturday from seven to three. Again, please take note that the baler is open this Saturday, September twenty-third, from seven to three. It is free for residents to discard items like couches, mattresses, tires, et cetera. To get that free pass into the baler, please present a copy of your sanitation charge utility bill and an I D. card. Just some of the things that you may discard are five tires without rims for household, but no commercial tires, heavy truck or equipment tires, no hazardous chemicals or paint. Freezers and refrigerators must be tagged as free-on-free by a licensed agent. After Saturday, of course, you are always welcome to dump with the appropriate fee. Please continue to enjoy this beautiful weather as we now roll into fall. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the September fifth, twenty-three council meeting as published.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any discussion or further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Vikram to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we refer to as the public forum. For those who aren't familiar with that, it is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for the council to listen. No action will be taken, and I see that there are no sign-up sheets for this section, so we will move on. We are now into action items. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing. Council will be leaving regular session and will now convene as board of adjustment. This is to consider Carl Carlson is requesting a zone change from R three and C one to R six A for lot seven and eight, east hundred and one point eight feet, Williams subdivision. And I will now open this up for a public hearing. Are there any persons who wish to speak in favor of this request for a zone change? Mr. Carlson? And we know who you are, but would you please state your name for the record?
Carl Carlson.
Thank you.
Okay. I was just asked for the zone change. We had had chickens for seven years, and I, I guess it wasn't zoned for it. And I, the sale barn is right behind me, and it's at the end of the city limits, towards the end of the city limits. So, do you guys have any questions?
I know the area, Ian. Who is, who owns the property just west of your property?
My dad.
Okay. That wasn't a trick question. I just want to let everybody sort of get the layout. And it's in that corner, so to speak. So your north neighbor is the sale barn, or your south neighbor is the sale barn. And Z and W Mill, I guess?
Yeah.
And...
And being honest with you, I always thought from the fire hydrant over was at a city limits, but I guess it's not according to the map. So...
And there's no, you have no neighbor to the north, right? That's bus barn and school property.
Yeah.
And I think I read in here, Mr. Carlson, that this adds up to about a little less than a half an acre?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
And maybe you said this or answered this question, but your dad is Carl Carlson, senior?
Yeah, well, he's actually junior. I'm the third, so, just to get it straight, but...
But he's in, in the county, right? His property is in the county?
No, I guess he's in the city limits. It's the next one over that's out, but he's zoned for the chickens. I mean, like here's the fence, he's zoned, and here's my chickens right across the fence.
Okay.
So, so the one just beyond that that's out, is that Halks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to...
You're right.
Get the houses figured out, so...
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Councilman Patterson, if we're starting from the west, this is Halks. This is his dad. And this is his property here. So right across is the bus garage, of course. Right to the south is the, the sale barn and Z and W, of course. The history on his father's place, that was city limits, right there between him and his father. This property, some owners ago, lost their well, so they had to tap into our water. So at that point, they had to annex. They had a horse or something at that time that they wanted to keep in there, so that's why that got zoned R six A. So when he come to me with this property, I figured that would be the best route to go. Plus, this property is actually two lots legally. This lot right here where the chickens sit is actually commercial. It's C one. For some reason, years ago, somebody made it commercial. I can't find the history on it. So what this would do is clean this whole property up of Carl's, Carl's property here, and it would go to R six A. Mayor, I told you this morning in the staff meeting, they can have up to twenty-five birds. I was mistaken. They can have fifty birds total.
How many birds do you have, Mr. Carlson?
Twenty-six.
Are you shooting for fifty, or are you...
No. No, actually, really be honest with you. We did have fifty-two for a little bit because we rotated them out, so we got rid of the old ones. And then we got, we raised the little ones. They're, they're just starting to lay eggs now. So we'd normally have about twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay. And your dad doesn't have any at the current time?
No.
So do you raise them as a commercial enterprise?
No.
Just for personal use?
Yeah.
And my understanding is the neighbors were notified, and there were no objections to this?
Yes, Mayor, the neighbors were notified. I had most everybody down the street here called me, and they were all okay with it. They weren't against it once I explained to what was going on. They all thought it was out of city limits to begin with.
But R six A is still not allowed chicken, right?
Yes, sir, you are. R six A was a new zone, and I believe that got put in place when they annexed everything above the old Jordan Field. That was a new zone because those folks all had livestock up there when they put that sewer and water up there. And I believe that was part of that. I could be mistaken, but I think the history, if I'm correct, that's how that R six A, you can have limited agricultural use. So that area above Jordan, and I believe the new college ag building is R six A. They could have limited use on, like, like in R six A, you can have up to fifty birds total. You can have one horse, one cow, properly pinned, and it has to be a minimum of fifty feet from any residents, and you can have no swine or goats permitted.
Well, didn't Mr. Eddington say a little bit ago we had to redo the statue?
We have an ordinance that prohibits chickens, and it should have been amended back in two thousand and sixteen when that R six A was, ordinance was passed and approved. And so if you proceed with this, we need to amend this regardless. But it, and, and so what I would recommend is that, it says foul prohibited, and we just didn't need to make it excluding R six A zoning because that specifically allows it.
Can we just need to clean that up?
Now, Mr. Eddington, if the council, well, will go forward on a vote on the quest for a zoning change, do we also need to have a, have a motion to amend that ordinance tonight, or...
I don't have it in front of you, but I, I can have it at the next council meeting. I think since the intent is already in this past ordinance, this, we can just catch it up the next three meetings.
And just follow up later with amending the ordinance?
If, if that's your desire to allow the zoning tonight. Regardless, whether you allow it or don't allow it, we need to amend this ordinance because of R six A.
And that's the request here tonight to take it and establish it as R six A?
That's correct.
You want to change both lot seven and eight to six A?
Yeah.
That's how it was publicized, yes, sir.
So it's all the same.
Mr. Carlson, you keep all your chickens in a, in a confined area, correct? They're not at large?
No, they're all in a pen, yeah. Correct.
No roosters?
No roosters. I already knew better than that.
Now, I know back when they were doing the chicken ordinance before, there was all kinds of arguments for and against, mostly against having chickens because they bring predators to town and stuff like that. You haven't seen that at your place, have you?
No, not really.
Because I haven't seen them, and I drive by there almost every day.
So council, if you can see from the street, this is what it looks like, and this is Carl's place. The chickens sit right back in here.
Next to the ditch?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, do you have any further questions for Mr. Carlson?
I don't.
Any, no? Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for this request for a zoning change? Anybody here like to speak against this request for a zoning change? Seeing no takers, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And council, I would entertain a motion on this request for a zone change.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve this zoning change.
I have a motion from Council Patterson to approve the zone change from, well, from what it is to establish it as R six dash A as set forth on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Vikram. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Do we need to put the stipulation in just for the first reading? Because we have to have three readings, right?
Well, we're just doing the...
Not for the zoning.
The zoning right now.
Next item will be the ordinance.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the request for a zoning change as set forth in the agenda to R six A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that request for a zone change is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the ordinance that goes with that. Mr. Eddington, could you read that ordinance for us, please?
It's an ordinance amending and reenacting, reenacting section one eight point one six point zero two zero of the Torrington Municipal Code, two thousand and twenty-three revisions relating to the city of Torrington, Wyoming, amending the zoning district map by establishing R six A zoning for attractive land, specifically lot seven and eight, east one hundred and one point eight feet, Williams subdivision, city of Torrington, Goshen County, Wyoming.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eddington.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve that the ordinance as set forth on first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor of approving the ordinance on first reading as set forth in item two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that ordinance is approved on second reading.
First.
First reading, I'm sorry. Approved on first reading. Jumping ahead of things. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Vector rental discussion. And I've asked Tom Troxel to come up and present this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
As you know, we initially came to you and requested to rent a Vector truck for three months. We had no idea at the initial time what the schedule was going to be for the M R G, emergency M R G grant that we wrote and submitted to the state. We found out today through an email that they are having an October fifth meeting. We don't have an agenda yet, but we do know that they're having a meeting October fifth. And without knowing what's going to happen with the grant, I think it'd be a good idea to add one more month of rent, if you allow it, so we can get a little more work done. We've got a lot done as far as on our maintenance schedule, and we've, that truck has just helped tremendously with, we've had our share of water leaks this last two months. It's done, like, one, one week, we had five water leaks. And that truck, you know, it's, it just saves so much time by using that truck rather than the old-fashioned way of using pumps and hoses. It's a lot cleaner, keeps the streets cleaner. You know, with, with a little bit of luck, with, with this grant request, if all goes well, you know, who's to say which direction it's going to go? I got high hopes, but we, that'll give us time to work some details out in the month of October. I still have a truck here in Torrington. It's just shy of twelve thousand dollars a month, just a reminder. I don't know, like, I'm asking for one more month, I may, I don't know what the end of October is going to bring. We might just be going on standby for a year or a year and a half with the city of Scotts Bluff. That's just something we're going to have to talk about at a staff level in October, November.
I mean, this, as you've said before, when you've appeared before council on this issue, this is a critical piece of machinery or equipment for this city, right?
Yes, it is.
Form your maintenance, keep up with your maintenance schedule and so on, and deal with things as they come along, right?
Yes. Yes. And as far as insurance, Mayor, Sylvia's on top of it. We have not heard all that much from the insurance. They're still looking for a chassis. They can't find a chassis. This is a specialized truck chassis because of the weight of that truck. So they're looking for that truck chassis yet, and then, once they find the chassis, they could build the quote to give to the insurance to see whether they're going to give the go-ahead to rebuild it or total it again.
And this, we, that has been... But he's, we still don't have numbers?
We still don't have numbers.
Which delays everything.
Big time.
And the truck is literally down in Denver at Joe Johnson's shop.
Yard.
Been down there.
And then it probably, if, if they decide to rebuild it, I was telling him at the staff meeting, they probably won't even do it there. They'll probably send it back east to Federal Signal, and Federal Signal owns Vector. Um, and they have other subsidies, you know, underneath Vector, they make street sweepers and whatnot, too, but pretty big company.
And the entity that we're renting from is also, we could purchase a Vector truck from them if perhaps the insurance company were to total.
Yes, we have a, we have a letter of intent. When we rented the Vector we have currently, we did a letter of intent, um, because they're the only ones that could get a Vector turned around, built that quick.
My, Mr. Mayor, my, my guess would be that you're between, well, between a rock and a hard place, because if they can't find a used chassis for an old Vector that would fit it, nobody's going to build one if they don't know it's going to actually be purchased and used. And since the insurance company won't make a decision until they know whether or not it's available and what it's going to cost, uh, we're stuck in the middle in the meanwhile.
Yes. We should know more, hopefully, by October, the evening of October fifth, or the afternoon of October fifth.
That's also when the slipboard.
Where somebody's going down to Cheyenne.
Right, right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Troxel, so I'd like to play out a hypothetical. Let's say that the insurance finally finalizes it to be a, a tote, they total the truck for the final time. Is the, let's call it thirty days in October, is that enough time for the state to award the grant money and get the truck that's on hold for us in, within October? Basically, is October enough time on the rental of this current truck enough in order for us to get the, uh, truck on hold, delivered and paid for?
Mr. Victorin, I can't honestly answer that question, because I haven't been in recent contact with, um, the agency that has that Vector. That's a question that I would have to ask them.
And to, so tonight, you're just asking the council's approval for one more month of rental?
Of rental.
And then see where we're at?
I guess, I was just, my, the.
Yeah.
The general question I had is, one month enough?
That's kind of what I was thinking, too.
Yeah, and that's what I said earlier.
But we can always address that in October.
Yes, our first in November.
Right. All right, gentlemen, any further questions for Mr. Troxel? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve an additional month's rent for the Vector truck.
So move.
I have a motion for, from Councilman Kelly to approve an additional month's rent. Take us through October for the Vector truck. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Dan.
Second from Councilman Patterson. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'd call for a vote on that. All those in favor of approving, uh, one more month's rent for the Vector truck, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signified by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that item number three is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Next item on the agenda is item number four, quest to approve the award of a bid for the FY twenty-four Public Works Facility Garage Edition. Uh, staff recommends awarding the bid to Paul Reed Construction of Geary, Nebraska, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, and reserve ninety-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, that is sixteen point seven percent, for contingency for a project total of five hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. And I'd refer to Mr. Harkins.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. Uh, like you said, this is for the Public Works Garage Facility. It, uh, it's going to be attached to the existing facility, which is out there by the Water Department. Uh, this project is a design build with the construction of a thirty-five by a hundred and twelve-foot steel addition. It'll have six garage bays. We had the bid opening on September sixth, uh, two bidders, Paul Reed Construction and Goshen County Construction. Each of their bids are shown there. Paul Reed was the low bid at four hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, as you remember, hopefully, this project was previously bid on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, at that time, we only had one bidder, Goshen County Construction, and their bid was seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, thirty-one dollars, uh, which far exceeded our established budget of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand at that time. So we recommended, and you voted to reject the bid at that time. Obviously, for some reason, the bids seem to be coming more back in line with what we had originally estimated, so, uh, I would recommend, obviously, that we take advantage of the very favorable bid from Paul Reed and, uh, recommend awarding this contract. We do have six hundred and eighty thousand dollars budgeted in this fiscal year for the construction of this project.
Gentlemen, any questions for Engineer Harkins?
I'm just curious why a design build was the route chosen?
Uh, typically, these buildings are pre-manufactured, like Butler Buildings, so the engineering of the actual building is done by the company itself, so it's mainly just the size. We pick the size, uh, the architectural layout of it, and they provide all the engineering for that. So paying engineer to do something that's already being done for you doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
And the location of this is on the main, what I'm going to call the administration building? Is that correct? On the south end?
South end.
But is this garage a need or a want?
Everything is a need, otherwise.
Everything that, that, it's my understanding that everything that needs to be put in to keep from freezing is already have a special garage for it, right?
Uh, not, well, it will be once we get the other garage facility next to the lift station built. That facility is going to house the Vector truck and the camera trucks. Uh, this facility houses more of the pickups and other equipment that they use. Tom could probably answer the question better than I can, as far as the need or the want of it.
That four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is about the cost of a Vector truck, isn't it?
Could be. But then again, we might get a grant to get it purchased, and then we still have this need to fulfill.
And there was, there is budgeted six hundred and eighty thousand for?
That was budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four budget, yes.
Is this, is this building cemented, have a cement floor? I assume so.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly, I will tell you that Tom has a dump truck at the shop that we need the space for. He also has a job trailer sitting at the shop that he keeps under that lean to that we need space. Uh, we have in the budget plans to, where that dump truck is, to put a garage door there to get onto our hoist from the south side of that building. That's in the budget this year, that's part of another project. Tom does have a lot of equipment sitting outside, like a John Deere tractor, he's got mowers, he's got equipment, he's got all kinds of pickups sitting out.
Yeah, with six bays, he's going to put six trucks in it.
I'll guarantee it'll be filled with his equipment. He's got a job trailer, he's got a dump truck, he's got pickups, he's got all kinds of, he's got another backhoe down there. His backhoe, in the wintertime, stays at our shop to keep it heated. So that takes up a space that he cannot have this year, because we moved a hoist over there, so he will not have that space this year.
Mr. Mayor, it, it seems to me that this discussion took place rightfully during the budget, uh, discussions. The issue tonight is not whether we want or need this thing, it's already been approved, it's, will we accept this bid or not? Given that the bid's about a hundred thousand dollars less than we budgeted, I would move to approve, to accept the bid.
All right.
I, I would, uh, I'll wait for the discussion.
I do have a motion, uh, from Councilman Patterson to approve the bid as set forth in item four, uh, in the amount set forth, uh, in the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Now, gentlemen, any discussion?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to make clear that while we approved, um, in the budget this year, the mayor, myself, and Councilman Deal were not part of the original discussion on the project in fiscal year twenty-two. That's not a, that's not a comment to you, Councilman, I just wanted to make clear that.
I appreciate the clarification. I, I, you're exactly right on that point.
All right, and thank you for that clarification, because that was done in twenty-two before any of the three of us were on council.
That is correct.
All right, any further, I have a motion in a second, we're in the discussion phase, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of awarding that bid to Paul Reed as set forth in item number four, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signified by saying nay.
Nay.
Aye. The, that award, that bid is awarded and approved.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Next item on the agenda is item number five, uh, award bid, new landfill compactor. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Wyoming Machinery of Cheyenne, Wyoming, in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And I would first refer to Clerk Treasurer Stracker.
Thank you, mayor and council. We opened bids for this compactor on September thirteenth at two P M. Um, we only received one bid, uh, from Wyoming Machinery, who is a local, um, Wyoming company. There is three hundred and sixty-five days to delivery for this, um, machinery, so we really need to get this ordered. Machine we have now is, is it forty years old? I guess Ed can answer that. Um, and it's on its last leg.
He's agreeing with you, it's forty.
Yeah. Um, so we, it is over budget by about five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, which, um, I believe we can probably, um, budget that with no problem in the next fiscal year. Um, it will be next fiscal year when we will expend it. Um, we did have plans to go ahead and get a, um, a lease purchase agreement on this in the current budget, so, um, I, it would be futile to try to get interest rates right now for something that's not going to be here in a year. So, um, closer to that timeframe, I will go out for proposals for the best interest rate we can get at that time, and maybe by then, interest rates will be down, I don't know, but, um, so, um, staff recommends to award the bid, um, to Wyoming Machinery for six hundred and forty-five dollars and nine hundred and thirty dollars, six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
All right, gentlemen, any question, further questions for Clerk Treasurer Stracker?
No questions, I would make a motion to award the bid to machine Wyoming Machinery Company.
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to award the bid as set forth in item five for the baler, uh, to Wyoming Machinery of Cheyenne, Wyoming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Is there any further discussion, gentlemen?
I just would like a question to our sanitation superintendent. Given that it's a year out for delivery on the compactor, and given the age of the baler itself, do you foresee that our current compactor can last another, another year, Ed? I think you told us in, uh, the budget talks that if the baler was down, the compactor would have to be used all day, mostly every day.
Yes, it would have to be used the full shift every day if the baler goes down. We'll keep our fingers crossed that the baler will stay running and, and we'll make it through the winter. We've been babying along and taking real good care of it. Daryl was working extra hard to keep it well-serviced.
And this will be placed out at the landfill?
It will go to the landfill.
All right, we're.
Is there, sorry, Mr. Mayor, is there anywhere that offers a, a rental of this type of equipment? Should we?
It would be very hard to find a rental. It might, somewhere in the eastern part of the state, I've found them in Pennsylvania, a rental purchase, but time you pay the freight to get something that's fifteen foot wide and sixty thousand pounds to Wyoming is going to be very expensive.
All right, we are in the discussion stage here, does, gentlemen, do you have any further questions for Mr. Hawley? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, uh, the rewarding, approval of the award for the bid for the new landfill compactor set forth in item number five, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signified by saying nay. Hearing no nays, uh, that bid, it's approved, that award bid for the new landfill compactor. Next item on the agenda is item number six, approval of the bills from September sixth twenty-three to September nineteenth twenty-three, and I, for reference, I'd refer to Clerk Treasurer Stracker.
Thank you, mayor and council. Attached to your agenda were a list of bills, and also handed out tonight was additional set of bills. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Strick, Mrs. Stracker, I noticed on page one of the, attached to the agenda, uh, those drug screen tests, uh, that's through AccuScreen, that's a local entity?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and before, we had to go to Scotts Bluff, I think, for those?
Um, they actually came up here once a month for those.
Scotts Bluff people?
Yes, but lots of times, um, they would cancel and not tell us, so, um, we decided to go local, and these are actually for, um, new hires, so this is definitely more convenient for us, um, to get those done locally so that they can get on-boarded.
And that cost is comparable or less than what it was?
Yeah, it was comparable.
Scottsbluff people?
Yes, but lots of times they would cancel and not tell us. So we decided to go local. And these are actually for new hires. So this is definitely more convenient for us to get those done locally so that they can get on-boarded.
And that cost is comparable or less than what it was?
Yeah, it was comparable.
On page five of the first set of bills, Joe and Flow Investments. It sounded like they're doing window washing?
Yeah, they wash the windows here at the Lincoln Center. There is a lot of them. And we have that done usually fall and spring.
Just doesn't sound, Joe and Flow Investments, it doesn't sound like a janitorial service.
Yep, they do a really good job.
Are they local?
I believe they're out of Scottsbluff.
They are.
They are. They do the college, too, they have for years.
I think they do a lot of them downtown as well.
Yeah, commercials. Think the courthouse, too.
They're good, they do my office.
Make it look effortless.
So which windows, then, are the, on page six, Blue John Cleaning?
Those are the fire hall.
That's the fire hall.
If there are no more questions, I'd make a motion to approve the bills as presented?
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the bills as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, just one question, Mr. Mayor. I thought I saw on here for Butler's Auto Sowage on the first set for a tow. Says tow E5 to Longmont, complete transfer.
What page is that?
Which one?
First set, page one.
Oh, the first set, oh.
That's the back truck.
I believe that was for, no...
Well, there's two. There's on second set, there's also a payment. Says tow charge for the jet rodder. First set says E5.
I believe that is a fire truck. It's coded to fire. I believe they, yeah.
Is that one we were having pump issues with?
Yes, I believe so. That truck bill was...
Yeah, that one's almost $7,000.
That truck was almost $7,000.
It's my understanding that will be reimbursed from insurance? Is that correct?
Yes.
Maybe someday.
Yeah.
Hopefully, someday.
As quickly as they work.
All right, gentlemen, we are in the discussion stage of the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would call the question.
Say again?
I would call the question.
Okay. Have Councilman Deal call the question. So I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the bills from September 6th, '23 to September 19th, '23, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, item six, approval of the bills, is approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment time. That is a time for anybody who wishes to publicly comment. Is there, are there any takers this evening? Or council, anything council wants to?
I would like to thank Ed and his crew for doing the crosswalks up by the senior center. But I still would like to come see if we can put a pedestrian crossing sign up there because them people don't care. They just keep buzzing through there. But thank you for doing the crosswalk.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, as busy as it was around town on Saturday, I'd like to thank the Streets Department for all the barricades and Chief Johnson for keeping us all safe and sound.
All right, and normally Fire Chief Patch is here, but he sent a report by email. I think he is coaching seventh-grade girls volleyball. And I believe they're in Douglas this evening. I have a granddaughter who's in eighth grade, and that's where she is. So I assume they're up in, all up in Douglas. But he basically said it's been pretty quiet. Odds and ends. I would ask former Fire Chief Estes. I know we were concerned with the tall grass because of all the moisture we had this year. Are we getting close to getting out of fire danger out in the rural areas?
I would not think so, no. One of our worst grass fires was on Halloween that I remember. So no, it all depends, you know, it's still pretty warm out.
So just ask everybody to be extra careful because there's a lot to burn if something gets away. All right, any further comments by council? Hearing none, we have completed this agenda this evening. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.